Hey, ¿qué pasa, Callejico? Welcome back to the podcast. Like always, before we begin, I want to thank my friends here at Callejico Marine Company for allowing me to record today's episode here. I really, really appreciate the space and the ambiance here in Callejico. It feels like home for me every time I come here. My guest today is somebody that is coming down all the way from Westmoreland, and I feel really bad because she drove down here and then had a little incident. But you know, I'm really glad she came because you know, we've been talking a little bit before we started recording and you know, she has a... She's inspiring. You'll get to hear what she has to say, but my guest today is Gloria Brambila. She's running for Westmoreland School Board. And thank you for coming down and you know, we never get rain here and it rained today and then we had a little incident here, but I'm really glad you're here.
Nothing that can't be handled. There was a storm, but we're here, we're safe, and I'm very happy to be here. I am very appreciative that you're bringing me on. I see that there's a lot of interviews and mainly they're like for city council or you know, other than school board and that you considered me to come and speak on your podcast and share with you a little bit about our Westmoreland, our North End community. That is something I truly appreciate. Thank you.
I think, I think since I work for the school district, a lot of the candidates locally for school district are kind of afraid because I might ask the hard questions. I think I did it once and I guess I interviewed-
About budget or something.
Or unions, because I'm part of the union here. The only time, I think it was, no, I interviewed another school board member for Callejico that was running, but I interviewed somebody that was currently a school member and I interviewed him and then he didn't want me to post the interview.
Oh, no.
So I said, "Never again will I interview him" or any other candidates that I feel are going to treat me the same way.
Well, I'm very transparent. I think if I have the answer, I will share it or I will give it. If I don't, I will research it and then come back to you and give you the answer.
And to me, like, I really appreciate you and Victor Carrillo. Shout out to Victor Carrillo for introducing, you know, us and telling me about you. You're running for Westmoreland. And in reality, like, I've never talked to or interviewed somebody from Westmoreland. I think, you know, a lot of us, you know, drive by there when we're going, you know, north. But it's, you know, it's part of our county, part of the valley. And a lot of the times, you know, hearing from you right now, you know, I feel like a lot of the times we forget about, you know, the North End.
Right.
But I feel that, you know, hearing what you've been doing all this time and then hearing what Jackie's been doing, I feel that there's a lot of, especially, you know, shout out to you women that are, you know, advocating for, you know, those communities in need and... But you know, before, you know, I know your story because you've been telling me, but you know, I would want, you know, my listeners to listen to some of the things that you've done and you're doing now. But you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, how you got to where you're at now and you know, deciding to run for city council, for school board.
For school board. Well, my name is Gloria Brambila. I'm, I don't know, people say their age or not, I don't have a problem. Forty-six years old. I am a Caliputra Hornet. Shortly after there, I moved to Westmoreland. So half my life I've lived in Caliputra, the other half in Westmoreland. I'm the youngest out of five. And my parents were from Madalajalisco and they've now passed away. So I worked for Westmoreland initially before starting my job with the county. So I was a para, no, I worked for Brawley as a para educator. And at the same time, I worked for Westmoreland as a playground supervisor. So thereafter, I needed a full-time job. I loved what I did. I didn't want to leave the kiddos. I had a little one going to school there at the time, so I really enjoyed working there and you know, seeing our kids. But I needed to, you know, take that next step. So I did that. I started working with the county human resources department. So I worked for the county short of 20 years. Pretty much half at HR, a little bit less than half, the other at the probation department, where I gained a vast knowledge of information, ways to pretty much serve our community. You know, when you work for the county, you are a public servant. So you treat everyone, no matter where you work, from your custodian all the way to your CEO with the same respect. And my first chief was very adamant about all of his staff following that, that we treated anyone that walked in from your probationers, from your custodian staff, all the way to your board supervisors with that same level of respect. So I think I learned a lot during my tenure there, not knowing that it was preparing me for, you know, a different turn in life, you know? So after working there, I also did employee public relations there. I was an office supervisor and the executive assistant to the chief. And I handled all human resources, internal investigations at the support staff level. And we all, when you work for the county and when you work for anywhere, you wear a lot of hats. So I was grateful that I had that opportunity to learn, you know, different areas and build strong working relationships with all of our county departments because probation is pretty much the hub that works with everybody. You know, from your court system to behavioral health, to social services, you name it. We worked with every single, the sheriff's department. So I had that opportunity to not only make great friendships, like Mr. Carrillo when he was a board supervisor, to your line staff that sometimes become your friends. So I, from there, well, I have five sons. Five sons, ages ranging 28 to six years old. Three of them are already adults and have gotten their education, gone to school. And two of them are small, so it's kind of like we started all over again. Another new little family, but same family. And I do have a son that has autism. So he was the reason, or you know, why I, life changes. And a lot of times, you don't know or you don't understand, but then afterwards you realize, "Oh, this was my purpose in life." You know, everything else prepared me. I thought I was gonna retire from the county and, you know, have my benefits and all of that. And when I made the decision to leave my job, it was, it was a very difficult decision to make, but I can wholeheartedly tell you that it was the right one. And so I chose to not retire. I resigned by choice and that way I could be there full-time for my son and hopefully help him to the best of my abilities to, you know, be the most productive citizen that he could be, you know, with his challenges that we were facing or that we do face daily. Every day is a different day. But I think your child that is, you know, an extra gift, you know, for your life is only for the betterment of you. They teach you. So indeed, he has. And so I became a volunteer advocate. So I became volunteering, learning more about autism. And while I was still working, I, he had been barely diagnosed. And I said, "Okay, well, it's so near and dear." And at the beginning, diagnosis can be very painful. So I said, "How can I make a positive out of something that's so painful?" And that's usually my style. If, you know, I try to bring out the best or the positive or the smiles. And if there's a negative situation, how can I bring the best out of that situation? And that's what I did. I started researching. I would say that the county would have proclamations for like just about anything. You know, any awareness. And I started looking, said, "We don't have one for autism." You know, I asked my chief, I said, "Chief, do you know why? Like, can I create one? What can I do?" He's like, "Go for it," you know? So I started researching. I presented it to the board and they adopted it. You know, so I started reaching out to the different organizations, schools that help out our children, so that it would become a... How can I say? It wasn't, it's not, it's for our families. That's the meaning of that proclamation. It's to recognize our children, our loved ones, our adults living autism, and also to recognize the people that provide services, the therapists, educators, everyone, you know, it's a whole community that it takes to service, you know, our children, or help our children, I should say. So it was very successful. It was a large group of people, you know, the different organizations came forth. So thereafter, I continued it. And then I started going to every city, not just a county, because I felt like, well, every, you know, every city, every child, everyone matters. So I would present it and fortunately, it was a very positive... It was received positive by our community where they, every city adopted it, you know, gracefully. And so I did that before leaving the county. So then I started my advocacy with my child and not just for my child. It's just for any child. Like I said, when you sign up to advocate, you're not signing the paper, you're signing your heart. And if you're gonna do it for one child, your child, you can't look away. You have to be, you know, there for every single child. You have to be present. And once you start that mission, there's no turning back. You know, there's no turning back. So that's what I did and I started volunteering my time and working on different things that I would see would serve my community. So when I had that time, I started helping out other organizations. So you might not know a lot about me because that was my style. I worked a lot behind the scenes to help my bosses. A lot of the work that I do, I just prefer to do it that way. Unfortunately, like presenting a proclamation takes for me to step up and be, you know, the voice or, you know, and when you are an advocate, you are the voice. Or running for, you know-
For Lecan, yeah.
You have to. And it's not so much about selling yourself or what you're about. It's why you're wanting to do the difference, why you're wanting to run to make the difference. What is your mission, you know? And it doesn't, you have to be consistent. You have to be consistent. You don't only do it while you're being elected. You have to be available to your families, to the community, to making that positive change even after elections, you know? And so that's what I'm big on. A lot of times I can't attend events because I'm fulfilling my mission, you know? I created, we inherited a library in my home. Really nice library, about 800 and plus books. They're all novels, so... And I had a child come in and she said, "Where are the kids' books? You know, where are our children's?" And so that started, you know, an idea. I said, "You know, it's, I can open it up to our community." We don't have a city library, so I thought, "Well, maybe we can bring my home to the community." And so through the closure of Lambs, it was unfortunate that the program closed, but it was a blessing for our children in Westmoreland. The person that worked for Lambs was a former resident of Westmoreland, you know, grown there. And she says, "Yeah, definitely, we are gonna consider you as one of the places for donations." So we have a lot of kids' books. We have arts and crafts at our home. I'm not a nonprofit. I, you know, like I said, my biggest profit is the faces of the children, you know, being happy and having that safe space that we can provide for them. We do a little bit of baking, a little bit of different stuff, you know, whatever they're up to for the day. You know, it's different, different activities that we, that we, I, that I offer. And so-
Yeah, I do that too with my, I say like "we" when I'm talking about my podcast and in reality, it's just me.
"We." So that, and like I was sharing with you, you know, I, through advocacy as well and through being diligent and through presenting facts in our board at school and our superintendent, being open and receptive to parents' ideas. I presented the possibility of creating sensory room. And after almost a year of advocacy and requesting and presenting, you know, almost 97%, I mean, of our children qualified, so that's a big percentage, you know? It was approved and then there was, right before our children came back from COVID, it was the ribbon cutting of it. So that was a very, a very, very nice moment for our children, our school. Like, we had something new to offer our children to reduce that anxiety or that stress of coming back from being gone from school for so long. You know, a place where they can regulate, where they can be calm. Our counselors can go in there instead of just a regular office, a regular setting. They can go and talk to them. Children like the sensory room.
What's this, I didn't wanna-
Interrupt.
Before you were talking, you mentioned sensory. What's, I don't, I don't really know what it is.
Well, I'd like to show you. It's a calm room that offers different, like the dimming of the lights, or little blue lights are different. I wish I could show you. But it's to help soothe or regulate or calm even an adult, you know? You have bean bags, you have bubble tubes, you have a different... We have children that have sensory overload, right? So it helps them calm them down.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I'm losing how to explain it. I mean, I have it here, but-
Well, I mean, because you know, I have two nephews with autism. So you know, I know what it is sometimes where like, sometimes I forget about my nephews and like, I'll be watching a football game and you know, I'll be screaming and you know-
And it's too loud for them to cover their ears.
So yeah, I know what it is to, you know, to, that need to have a calming place where it could be dark or not, or dim and-
Dim lights, aha. And then it can have soothing music also. And then it'll help them go back and transition to hopefully, you know, being able to concentrate better or to be nice and calm for whatever their next activity is. And it's not only for children with special needs. I think when I presented the idea, I presented it as a whole for it to serve all of our children, since 97%, you know, of our children qualified for it. That's just about 100%. And that's how it's being used now, you know? It's not just special needs or children that have different challenges with, you know, different abilities. It's for all children. That was my intention. When I present an idea, it's not just for one child, my child. It's how can we best make it work for all children?
Yeah. And you know, you've been doing so much, you know, behind the scenes, but now you've, you've, you know, decided to-
Run for office.
Yeah. Which is, you know, you're out in public, you know, it's more of a... Whether you like it or not, you have to show kind of like what you're doing or what you're focusing on, what you're trying to promote or move on, you know, when it comes to, in the school district. You know, why take that leap from being behind the, you know, the currents to like being the head of the, the face of the-
Because it is important. When you have your heart vested in your community, in your school, in your children, in your educators, some of our educators there are there from when my other children went to school there. So you, I can tell you, they're passionate. And it doesn't matter what school you go to, you can be successful. If you believe in these children and you tell them and you wholeheartedly believe that they could, they will. And they can become doctors, they can become anything that they wish as long as they have that support. And some of these educators that have been there, you know, mentors and for my children, you know, they'll still reach out to them for, "Hey, can you write me a letter of reference?" Or "Can you vouch what kind of student I was when I was there?" So I think it's, that's one of the reasons is for our community, for our children, to make sure that everybody is being supported with what is needed for their education and also for their jobs, for their careers, for, you know, to be able to assist our children to be the best of the best, you know? As school site council president, I think I've, I think I'm ready for that next step. I've been in that position. This is my second term, my fourth year. One year as vice president and I've had the chair seat for three years now. So I think, you know, the council presents ideas or, you know, through Title I and whatever funding, we, you know, we talk with our superintendents, our principals as far as recommending to the board or to see if we're in agreement or we make other proposals, you know? Our council has, through certain, for example, the McKinney Vento, that's our, you know, less fortunate children. We went out, we had a school site council member go out and receive donations to match up what the funding of the school was, to give them extra, you know? So little things like that, that I think if I were to hold a seat or have a seat at the table, I can help make a bigger difference. You know, I think as a parent, as an advocate, I've proven that leadership. I've proven that communication with all parties to make things happen and to be willing to roll up my sleeves. I don't, I've never been a person that needs a title, but unfortunately, to make a bigger difference, you need that seat.
Yeah.
And I think that's where I'm at now. I think I've been at the seat that I've been for now and I'm ready to take that next step.
The school board for Westmoreland is elementary only?
Correct.
Your kids from there go to Brawley?
Brawley Union High School.
Do you know the, you know, population of students that then, you know-
Transition or?
Or no, that are in the school district?
In our school district? 300 plus right now. It varies. It could be up to like 340, but it fluctuates more or less. It's a very small school. It's a very tight-knit community. Everybody knows everybody. I think I'm getting to know people because I lived in the outskirts for so long. So I'm really, as I'm walking, as I'm, you know, coaching, I get to meet my parents and our, you know, different children in our teams and you get to see the needs of the community.
Tell me a little bit about the coaching, because you mentioned it to me, but you know, people that-
Well, it's been a couple of years now, but we started and the first year, we didn't have uniforms. You know, we just played with, what are they called, the tees that have the-
Yeah, the different colors.
We played with those and the kids, you know, it didn't matter. They just wanted to play, so we made it fun for them. But then the, and it was a very, it was an inclusive league, but the following year, you know, presented that idea and the board and the president were very receptive. I chose not to be part of the board. I just, I just want to coach. If you guys let me coach, you know, I'd be more than happy. And we ended up being short coaches. So I said, "Okay, what I can do is I can recruit children." So I did that. I stood in front of the school for two weeks and I said, "Hey, tell your parents to fill this out. It's gonna be fun." It's not so, sure enough, we composed six teams. Six teams and we were short coaches. So I told my husband, I said, "Well, there's kids that want to play. What do we do?" And then I went to another, you know, another, one of our other candidates running actually. And I went to her, I said, "Come on, help me out." She's like, "I, we've never done it." I said, "That's okay. Well, YouTube, we'll Google, we'll do whatever." Just to make it happen so that the kids can have something to do. And that's what it is. I think that's one of the things I wish to promote. If elected, I wish to promote music. I think music has proven to help anyone and everyone in different areas, you know? It could be soothing, it could help you learn, it could just, and arts, performances, all of that. I think if our kids are exposed at a young age, they have more choices to make in life and they can see that they can too. If there's other schools doing that, then they can too. So going back to the teams, so I propose for the league to be all-inclusive. And that means all-inclusive. We had all children without making any differences and it was, it was agreed that that was gonna be the case. So all of our teams were combined, you know, with the different children of different abilities and our, you know, our children that have already played or haven't, you know? And we, we took it and we ran with it and we gave it our all. We gave it our heart. And I'm not gonna say it was a hard coaching to teams not knowing the sport. And I said, "I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna learn it." And I did, I did. And it was one of the most rewarding experiences to see that if you believe in children, no matter what, they will be successful. And that's what we did. We had our minor A team and we were playing in a regular league with Caliputra and other teams in, you know, in our league. And our team, my team, won all games. And these are half the children who had never played before. So it was, it was a huge deal. It is a huge deal when I don't, you know, I invite people to go to Westmoreland, to our community and see, see that we are an underserved, you know, population. I count myself in, you know? I, and that's why I want to work hard to make that difference. Where I felt, well, if we have our league here, parents don't have to worry about having to travel, sometimes not having a vehicle or the resources, you know, to put gas in that, to travel. And if you have it here, and most important for me, why, why it was important to have it in Westmoreland was because those are their friends. Those are the kids they see at school. So why not continue having them help one another? I think sometimes the adults are the ones that make the difference, but not the kids. And they did. They played. They helped out each other. We had a successful season. We closed it out with the sheriff's department taking their, what is it, sand rail?
Yeah, sand rail.
And a great group of staff, a lot of supporters going out to, to be present for our children, you know? And that's what it is. We need to just be present, you know? Show up. Show them that you're there. Show them that you care. And that'll make a huge difference. So I did that. What else did I tell you? What else? A lot of things, it's really hard for me to say what I do because I always try to just-
Yeah, not to, to-
Right. It's not about me. It's about the reasons why to do things.
I think that especially now that, and also this, you know, especially now that you're running for, for office, you know, you, even though you don't like it, you gotta sell yourself or promote yourself.
Right.
It's a huge part of, you know, running a campaign. You know, I see some people that can, that are running for city council or whatever or any of the elected positions and they could sell an Eskimo ice, you know, that, you know, it's, that's part of, you know?
Right.
And the things like, I don't know, you know-
I think I'm used to making people look good.
Maybe.
I think that was always in, you know, in me, not that I was asked it, but it was part of like, you know, making sure my chiefs, you know, were well represented, making sure whatever work went out of that office was the best of my ability so that they would look good in front of their bosses, in front of the courts, in front of, you know, whatever they were presenting. And so I think that was just embedded in me that I, you know, it's not about me. So I always work behind, you know, the scenes. But I think just being directly in Westmoreland made me step it up a notch where I had to go ask, you know, for help. I, you know, there's different things that I've done that, you know, like I said, I advocated for a child that didn't have a vehicle and there was a great sponsor that donated a huge amount in collaboration with other organizations and the community, you know, for that child too. So it's, like I said, it's about them, the community and not just Westmoreland. It's everybody and I think that's the beauty. And it's been, right now, as is running, you know, for candidacy or for a seat, the most rewarding to see the support that I'm having, not just from our Westmoreland leaders, but all our, like, my whole Impro County, you know, leaders that have said, "Hey, you know, yeah, I support you. I endorse you." I know, I don't know that we talk about that here, but like, I can. Okay, well, I do. I do have the support of our sheriff-elect. Our Mr. Marcus, running for DA also. I don't know, is that okay to be saying, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I mean-
Ms. Marcus Singh. I mean, she is a true community leader and advocate for empowering our women, you know? Our fire chief at Westmoreland, our police chief, you know, our council, one of our councilmen and other councilwomen, staff, different, you know-
Victor Carrillo.
Mr. Carrillo, Mr. Carrillo, Mr. Moreno too. A lot of our law enforcement also, because I worked with all of them. John John Moreno, Chief Benavides, Supervisor Mike Kelly. That was my original chief and my greatest mentor. Families, families from Westmoreland that I've also known from when my children were small are also key for me. It's everybody. Like I said, it's everybody's important. Everybody that supports, I'm grateful for. I'm probably forgetting a lot of people. That's why I don't like to name them, probably forgetting. But that's just to give you an example of the work that I can bring to the table of what I've learned throughout the years and how I've learned to be balanced and effective in what I do. And like I said, I work great as a team, but I'm not afraid to get it done. If I have to, I'll just get the job done and make it happen. And I think that's important to have, you know, to have that balance where you can bring new ideas to a table and share them. And I have done that with other organizations. I've shared my ideas. Some of them they've run with, some of them they haven't. But I think it's time now that I continue vested in our community and what I'm passionate for, you know, to hopefully help our children continue to develop in their best education possible. Our educators to be able to have all the tools necessary, the trainings, the material to provide those services and education to our children, that our counselors are, you know, certified in helping our children that have behavioral issues. I think that's important. I think mental health awareness is also important to address. And if we have counselors that have that experience to assist our children, you know, especially after COVID, a lot of children are having, you know- You know, especially after COVID, a lot of children are having, you know, different. Troubles, you know, coming back. Um, so I think all of that is important to address. So mental health awareness is definitely not something to be. Uh, a taboo or, or shy about. I think if we put it out in the open and, and help instead of looking the other way or being embarrassed about it. And like I was telling you, um, another thing that's big is I'm doing my walking, as I'm having my teams and I'm giving rides in my. In my car, you see, you know, it, it's, you, you see the need, you know what I mean? I include myself in that, you know, I. I don't, you know, leaving by choice my full-time job, cut our income into half, right? So you don't have that second income. So it, it's, it's a little tighter, but you may do with what you have and, and God provides. I'll tell you that, you know. Um, and you, as long as you keep sharing your goods or the little bit that you have, it continues to multiply. And, and I'll give rides in my little car as long as I have that little van. And like I said, people don't know, if we can learn to think outside the box also for our families, you know. That, that's one thing I'm looking at. If our children are having trouble getting to school because of transportation, even if they're in town, how can we best the system? So that they're not absent. How can we help that parent that has more than X amount of children? And it's difficult and they're trying to better their lives. So you wanna be there of support. So that they can continue to better themselves for their children, you know, and, and for me, the thing is. You never know. You can't judge. You can't judge because you never know when you're gonna be on the other side of the coin. You know, you never know. You just, it could happen in a heartbeat. It can, and it doesn't have to be a, a disability or a different ability. That you're born with. I mean, you can have a car accident and your life changes, you know. So we always have to be mindful in what we do. We have to be committed, transparent. And um communicate that to earn the trust of your community, to look them in the eye and tell them, okay, this is the reason I did that. And this is where the funding went. And these are the reasons why, you know. I, I think it's important to, I, I have my little, you know. My, I usually speak from the heart, Jose, so I don't carry a script. If you look at all my proclamations are different. Because I, I think if I just speak from the heart, I don't have to remember because it's something that's always there. So it's different every time I speak, but um, those are some of the things um that I am interested in. Building stronger partnerships between our district and our community, where they feel part, where they feel included. Where a lot of times our community probably um is not aware or, or, or shy from participating. But when you start building, you know, like these teams of, of sports and these parents start to know each other, they feel involved. And, and the community starts to change for the better.
You create, you create a, you know, community within your community.
And it's so small, you know, it's so small. And then you become aware of like, say, for instance, parents that don't have that support system, right? Or uh, single, you know, parents. And sometimes they need that emergency pickup of their child. Well, when you, you know, net them together, now, you know what? Guess what? They can ask so-and-so for that help. Can I count on you to pick up my child? You know, and if they see that you take care of your child really good, well, then they're gonna count on you to be able to. You know, do the same for theirs. So I think for me, that's really important, building that community unity, you know. Um, I think I'm able to do it at a larger scale where it's proven that I can bring large groups together for a great cause. So I think I can continue to do that within my community. I've proven to do that, you know, I've proven. Um, to do that with our families, with our children. And I think I've, you know, some of our board members as well. I've known him from when our children were little, they played on the same teams and stuff like that. So I think um, working together is key. You know, having differences in opinion, but as long as the reasons are for the betterment of our students and for our educators. And for the whole, you know, all of your staff. Like I said, for me, um, your. Crossguards or your, you know, playground supervisors or whatever title is, is now, you know, different to your superintendent. I would advocate the same. If it's somebody that needs, you know. That advocacy, you, you do the same.
Hey guys, sorry for the interruption, but I wanna take this time and thank my sponsors. I wanna thank my friends Camilo, Jake, Eric Ortega. I wanna thank Eddie Lopez from Roots Creative, Ms. Norma Sierra Galindo, IID Director, representing Division Five and serving the entire Imperial Valley. Will Torres from Valley Sports Network, your Imperial Valley source for sports. I wanna thank Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs, with eight years of experience serving the Imperial, San Diego Yuma Counties with Mexican-style hot dogs and taquitas. Contact Sergio at seven six zero five six two zero zero fifty seven, or look for Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs on Facebook. I wanna thank Eric Reyes from Los Amigos de la Comunidad, empowering communities together. Finally, I wanna thank David Gastelum. If you're thinking of buying or selling a home in Imperial or San Diego Counties, make sure you contact David. He's not only a Realtor, but an investor with over twenty years of experience. And he'll teach you along the way in one of the most important investments of your life. Um, contact David at seven six zero two three five nine five seven six, or look for David Gastelum on Facebook. All right, guys, we're now back to the show. In the, in the county where, you know, there's a lot of employees, um, there's probably people that are in different unions. Um, a- and when it comes to the school district, it's similar because you have your CCA and, and ACT. Is it ACT?
I'm not sure on that one yet. I'm still like.
Cause you're in Mexico, CCA and then ACT. I think it should be ACT, Associated California Teachers, I think.
I can get back to you on that one.
But, but yeah, there's two, there's two, um, you know, unions, groups that, you know, a, a lot of the times are. You know, advocating for different things and, you know, with, within the employees, you know, and you've worked with um.
I worked with all levels. I'm pretty much working in administration uh with probation department. I mean, all of our employees were within different, you know, your support staff is, you know, CCA. And then you have your uh, uh, CP or your uh P, what is it called? The probation and corrections, you know. Also, or you have safety, you know, you have different, um, then you have administration. So um, I think. As a depart, uh, well, would, would be a department here, right? But this is your, your board. I think if you make decisions um being fair and balanced, always is key. And for the right reasons, um, you will be able to carry out your job. Where there's not a personal gain or a personal reason that you're making a decision and it's fair and balanced. I think that's what's carried me through in, in all my career, that as long as I never put in my personal feelings towards this person. Because of whatever, you do your job, you know, you do your job to the best of your abilities. And I've always remembered that if you're fair and balanced and you have everything laid out at the table. And you know that you did the best of your abilities, if, you know, they're presenting to you a negotiation for increase. Okay, well, dig in your budget. Does it merit it? Do we have the funding? Do your math, do your research, you know. Make sure you go over your data and look into it, you know. Study your answer before you just say no, or before you just say yes, you know. I like to do that. I, I think I might, you know, be a little different in that aspect. I do research and I do looking into everything. Because I was trained to do that, that was my job, you know, I had a proofread. I had to make sure everything that went out of the office was, right, so I. Right, so I do that. So I think I feel confident that, I know I feel confident and I know I will do the same for our school district. To make sure that the funding is distributed accordingly to the needs of our um children, to the needs of our educators. Uh, to the betterment of the school, you know, a lot of uh nice things have occurred, you know, betterment. For the safety, you know, cameras, different things have been brought up. And, and I think we have uh, uh administrators that are receptive. And listen to the community, listen to the public. I just think as a community, we need to not be afraid to speak up. And, and us as, as representing uh the school, if elected. Give that confidence, that trust for people to feel comfortable to talk to us, you know. Whether it's employees, whether it's uh just your community or parents, where they don't feel that a title makes you any different. You know, titles, I don't need a title, but in this case, if I wanna sit at that table and make that bigger impact for our community, for our children, for our school. I have to have a title, right? But that's not gonna change who I am. I'm still gonna be approachable. I'm still gonna be, you can still call me. You can still lock on my door. It doesn't change, a title doesn't change who you are. And so for me to answer that question, I don't know if I answered it or not, I think as long as you do things to the best of your ability and you're fair and just. When making a decision about um, what is it called? A, a, a union? You know, if a union goes and presents to you and, and I see that, I mean, in my opinion, all levels of staff interact with our children. From the people that greet them at the beginning of the day, to the people in the cafeteria, to the, you know, custodians and your aides and your teachers. And your transportation. So I think as long as things are being done with equity and fairness. Um, that's what keeps you at the end of the day, you know, with a peaceful mind.
And, and, and not only that, but you know, it, it, it um, because there's a shortage of teachers. Of counselors, you know, there's a shortage of a lot of, you know.
Turnover too. There's, you know, people come in and work or, or, you know, and then they just decide.
So if, if they know that, you know, they have a, a council, a, a, a school board that is supportive. That listens, that's fair, you know, and it does a lot to, to your, to your district, to your teachers. To, you know, to bring, you know.
The morality, you wanna retain them. You don't want, I mean, it's great that we can train, you know, be that school to train new staff. But, and be their stepping stone, but it's also neat when you have teachers, like I've mentioned, that have been there. That, you, you know, your children need consistency. So if you can keep your staff, if you can meet. What they also need to, you know, to not have to leave to a different district, you know. Um, you know, I think it's important to, to, if we have students that are road runners. And wanna come back and give to your community, who better than them to be role models? You know, we do have a teacher that was, you know, there. And now he's one of our greater mentors for our kids. And um, so I think those are great examples that they can be successful to. You know, that you're letting them know that, hey, if you're from Westmoreland, it doesn't matter if it's an underserved community. And I think that's what I try to work hard with my little ones or, you know, the kids come over of all ages and parents do too. I invite the parents too. And I think I always try to reinforce that, that positive, you know, like um, if you can and, and if you want to, you, you will. And, and they start reading and they start, you can see, you can see that, that um, I wish I could invite you so you could see what I'm talking about. You can see that change and you can see that happiness in a child when you um build up, help them build up their self-esteem.
Sometimes a little bit of encouragement.
Yeah, and sometimes they don't have that one person and you can be that one person to turn around their life. You know, you can be that one neighbor that they're gonna remember forever because, hey, you know, they did this or. And it can be something small. It doesn't have to be, you know, like I tell you, you saw my car, you can, you know, they don't care. I give them rides and they're happy, you know. And um, and that's what it's about, you know. I, I think that's one of the things that autism has completely changed my perspective in life. That i- i- you know, material things come and go. It's more of, of what your heart can give. And what your heart can make a difference in, you know, or what lives it can impact. And, and like I said, for me, I think I've um. I've, I've done, my heart is, is happy if nobody knows what I do. I think the one person that needs to know knows. So um, but I mean, I, I think I shared with you, I don't know if I'm repeating myself, but um, music. You know, bringing uh music for our children, bringing um an orchestra. So that they know that there's different things out there that they can also do, instruments that maybe they haven't seen before in, in real life, a violin, a guitar, you know. Um, I think that's important to bring back into our schools. Uh, it's therapeutic, you know, they're learning without knowing they're learning. They're being sued, they're being prepared. It's really, you know, statistics show that they, if, if you prep them with calming, you know, classical music. Their chances are, are better at uh a test, you know. So I, I, we're as council and, and as a, as a mother and as a parent, and I, I propose that, you know, to um organize that. To bring the Kennedy um, uh, or middle school orchestra along with our Ivy Symphony, um. What are they called? Our Ivy, I'm at a loss of words, our Ivy Symphony, um. Goodness gracious, I, what is it? Let me, I'll have to uh masters, our concert of masters. Yeah, the two of them um came over and played with our children. So um, they were just in awe. And then we also scheduled a, a storytime with music in the classrooms. So reading of a book and, you know, guitar and, and you can see without a lesson, the kids like caught on and sang and, you know, learned. So I think if we were able to bring that back into not only the schools, into the community. And like I said, I, I, my proposal is for a more creative learning environment for all. You know, um, where it's fun, where they feel that, hey, you know what? I wanna go, I wanna, we're gonna do something fun, but it's gonna help me learn anyway. You know, thinking outside the box, um, and, and just running with it and, and seeing that it works. And like I said, thankfully, what I've proposed and what other parents have proposed, you know, are. Has been well accepted and applied and, and this different shows. Sports, I think now with the passing of our gym, I think we're one of the few schools that didn't have a gym. So you can imagine, there's really not much for the kids to do.
Yeah, especially it's either too hot, it's cold or too windy or something.
Right, in the summer, it's too hot. Um, so I think with the construction of our new gym. That's gonna open a, a lot more um sports, you know, uh possibilities for them to have. Or uh opportunities for them to have indoors and, and still be active. Just all of that, all of that is, I think, key. Bringing back folclorico, bringing back cheer or dance or things like that. You know, all of that is part of an important curriculum, part of the education.
Yeah, so it's part of, huge part of socialization. Yeah, you, you know, I played sports and, and, you know, I made a lot of friends, talked to a lot of people that otherwise if I didn't.
Interacted with.
So i- it's a good way to get kids out of their comfort zone and talk to new kids. I mean, Westmoreland is a smaller community and probably talk, and they know more of, you know, the same kids. But sometimes they, they might not talk to them because for some reason or another, but you know, maybe their teammates and baseball team. You know, they start talking to each other. Um, earlier you, I think, I don't know if we were already recording or not, but you, you mentioned about, you know. Um, cause it's a question that I ask a lot, a lot of people who are running, you know, if you lose, you know, how do you? What, what, what are you planning to do? Are you, are you gonna be, still be involved? Because a lot of the times you get candidates that are running for city council or school board and they lose and, you know, they, they stop being involved. But, you know, I think you've answered that question because, you know, you're already doing it. And I don't think, you know, you not getting the seat would stop you from.
Of course not. I, I, it's my passion, it's my heart. Um, like I said, that's one thing that uh. Prevents me from attending these meets and greens because I'm busy with our kiddos, you know, because I don't have the heart to say no. And if they wanna come over for storytime, and even if it's from a different city, I've had children from different cities that have reached out. And, and right off the bat, I say, I'm not an educator, I'm not a, you know, in shape or form librarian. It's just our home. And we give what we have wholeheartedly. And if you wanna come and be part of it, that's fine. And, and we are welcome to have you. I would one hundred percent continue to do what I'm doing. I think I'm gonna continue to do it as long as I'm alive. Because that is my passion to advocate for, I mean, like I said, I had a career, but I didn't know what that career was building me strong for. One of the little notes that I, you know, recently, i- it was like, okay, when does her term expire? And the little note on the side, you know, where they're handing the information to the new principal. Said, it had my name in it, said she will probably re- reapply or rerun. And that's correct. I would, you know, rerun for uh. School site council seat. I would still be part. I don't need to have a title to be involved. I will still continue to um, do what I'm doing. Um, actively with our children, hopefully um with our city and continue to help our children grow in their education. And also in their social skills and, and, and in our community, just so that they know that they too can be productive citizens, you know. Like I mentioned to you, I, I saw that a lot in probation, that it is, it's, it's, statistics prove that. If, if you take action immediately, reducing recidivism rates is, is huge. I mean, you, don't let it escalate to when they're adults. If you can catch it at a young age. And, and redirect them into positive things, you know, um, you can make that difference. When they're young and learning and, and um hungry for knowledge. You can be that difference for them. So not letting it get to the point where there's already rates of. Prime that we see a lot everywhere, um, and encouraging them by having these. that we see a lot everywhere and encouraging them by having these activities, having these extra, you know, we do have, I, I think we're very fortunate that probation does have an after-school program and the school does have an ACES program. But I think kids need to move, they need to play soccer, they need to play baseball, they need to, you know, basketball. And, and a lot of times, like I said, we don't have that there. How can we bring it to Westmoreland so that our families don't have to travel to other cities?
Yeah, because you mentioned, you know, it's, it's, even, you know, not only, you know, Westmoreland, but there's people in every city that might not have a car, might not have the transportation. But, I mean, you, you, you see it because, you know, you're such a close knit community that, you know, you know who, who needs anyone.
I, I think I, it, it was a blessing in disguise. I love living in town. I lived out of town for so many years. I couldn't wait to move into town and when I did, it, it, it was really neat because I was in town now. Everything, if I forgot a gallon of milk, I didn't have to run all the way back in town to get it. But not only that, because now I'm actually to like firsthand see the need. So my three boys grew up very close-knit and pretty much out of the country because got home from work, did their work, it's already nighttime. And I think that's one of the main reasons why I wanna continue to be active and continue to take a leader seat because I do have two children that live in Westmoreland. I do have two children that go to school there. And just like I want them to have the best of the best, I want every child that goes to school to have the best of the best. And it can happen, there's no reason for it not to happen. I think, you know, we have a, a nice budget that can afford that. And we want to be able to give our kids the ability to be successful. So now that my children are in town, I want them to have good friends. I want them to have good opportunities to go the right way, not to, you know, you know, take a different turn. And, and so I think that's another reason why I want to be as active as possible. You know, I'm not 20 anymore, so it's a little more of a challenge to be as active as I would have been then, but I think I can do it. I still run, I still, you know, have fun with the kids and I think they keep you alive, they keep you going. Yeah, well, I don't know, young, but yeah.
So we're at 52 minutes already. Is there anything that, you know, I didn't ask you or we didn't talk about that you would like to kind of mention or, or let the listeners?
I think I told you I was also a notary public. So I'm a homemaker, I'm a notary public and I'm a volunteer advocate. And I serve on our school site council as a school site council president. And I would love the opportunity to continue to serve our community, our students, our educators in the capacity of Westmoreland Union Board of Trustees. And I'm just grateful that you took the time to have me here. Thank you so much. I am thankful to Mr. Carrillo for considering me and recommending me to you because he does see the need of Westmoreland and I think he saw that it was important to have a voice for Westmoreland present. So I think I, more than anything, I wholeheartedly thank you because.
Thank you for coming now.
You're right, the north end is, is a little forgotten, you know? So if I'm able to bring resources there and, which I'm also working on, you know, workshops or different things for our families there, there will be a less of a struggle and there will be more opportunities. So just grateful to all my supporters, all my endorsers, if I forgot any, I apologize. I will, I will say who they are later.
Do you have like a Instagram or something where people can follow your campaign or?
I don't, I, I wasn't even active on social media until just too long ago. I have just my regular Facebook page and, and I just didn't even post anything until recently of, you know, pretty much like I said, what I do is what I do. So it's not like I'm doing something different to promote my campaign because I've been doing it.
The only thing that I would probably would want to see is if it's not like you promoting yourself, but maybe promote the things you do and you don't really have to show who, who, who's doing it. Maybe if you have a name for your, your activities or group that you're doing, maybe.
Well, I'm not a nonprofit yet. I maybe I should consider it because I, you know, everything we do, we do out of our home budget, like whatever our income is, or I don't have an income, but my husband's income. But I think it, yeah, it is important, it is important to show. I, I guess I have to give it a name.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's something that I would highly recommend because.
Well, there's a name, it's I Believe in You, that when I create my nonprofit, if I do.
Here first, I Believe in You.
I Believe in You.
But yeah, I mean, I would recommend you do it because, you know, that way, community or people in the community that might have books or, or toys or anything can, you know, you're not a nonprofit yet and it's kind of hard for, you know, so. But maybe you, you know, can help out your, your husband's budget.
That would be nice.
I mean, yeah, I think that, that would be a good, good idea to do because.
Definitely. I mean, they see, I, I do post activities with parents' permissions. I do post what our kiddos do or, you know? And like I said, it's not, I don't claim it to be professional, it's just out of our home, it's out of my heart, but you can see the faces, you can see the joy in the kids and I think that's more rewarding than it having to be professional. And, and professional means, you know, just, I don't know. But I think if you have heart and soul in what you do, that's, that's all it takes sometimes. You know, of course, money, the budget, but no, you're right. No, thank you so much. I'm trying to see if there's anything because we're closing to time. So just add to all my supporters, to all the people that believed in me and have for the past, you know, decades, I, I appreciate their support. I hope I can be that link because I do have the connections to bring very positive things to our kids in Westmoreland. So I hope that in the capacity of Board of Trustees, I'm entrusted to continue to serve our community and, and our children. I forgot Armando Padilla, he's also one of my supporters from Raleigh Union, Raleigh Elementary School District. I'm forgetting a lot, so thank you, thank you just everybody. Thank you, Jose. For your time and, and allowing me this space to share with you.
Like I always say, you know, it's a platform for everybody. You reached out from Westmoreland, anybody else from Westmoreland that might want to reach out. I'm, I'm open. To me, it's just my little grain of salt to support the community, you know?
It's a beautiful grain of salt, thank you. It makes a difference, it does, it truly does.
I really want to inform, you know, the, the community about the candidates.
It's important for them to know who they're voting for or, for them to make an informed decision.
You get that booklet and, you know, you don't really, you're reading it, you don't really know the person. I feel, you know, conversation is more.
200 words does not do justice to what that individual's career or, you know, mission and vision.
Their pathway to, to where they're at now or what and where they're running. So, yeah, to me, it's, you know, and, you know, I've been doing this for five years now and I think those last couple of years is when I've been getting more candidates reaching out. In the beginning, I had to kind of like beg people to be on. But, you know, it, it, it's encouraging to see people, you know, listening and, and, and wanting to be part of.
No, I'm, I'm truly grateful for Mr. Carrillo, even though he wasn't, he's not from Westmoreland, being from Collexico, that he considered me for your podcast, that I'm, I'm forever grateful. Like I said, he, I'm sure he did it confidently because he knows my legacy with the county. He knows my advocacy. He is a testament of, of my hard work. I don't think he would have recommended me otherwise, you know? So I, I don't take it lightly that a board of supervisor has endorsed me, that the elected sheriff, that chief of police for Westmoreland, our fire chief, our council men and women. I, I haven't asked for endorsement, like I said, I don't know, it's not that I'm asking, you know what I mean, like for a school to endorse, but staff, all levels of staff are also very supportive. Yeah, very supportive. I, like I said, I don't go out and reach out, it's just, you know?
Yeah, it happens naturally, yeah. Well, thank you again, thank you again. And, and, you know, it was a long trip and then a little mishap, but, you know, we'll get.
It's fine, like I said, I'm here, the weather was, was, there was a storm, it wasn't the best. But you know what, like I told you, Jose, there's nothing, as long as you have life, there's no challenge and, and, you know, with change, with challenges, change, right? But if there wasn't change or challenge, then what would be of you? Like you have to have sometimes things that build you and they build you stronger. So don't worry about any little mishaps. It's good, I'm here, we made it through and it's not raining anymore. So thank you for having me, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Likewise, likewise.
Thank you to our Imperial County communities that are watching.
All right, guys, well, thank you so much for listening or watching and we'll see you guys in the next one.